Is it? Can you hear me? Yeah, I just want to beg your patience. We're waiting for town council to show up. He is en route. And because of the nature of the citizens petition, we want to get everything right so it doesn't get rejected after the fact. So please bear with me. That's the holdup for a second. So I ask, I just ask you be patient. That's all. Thank you. Okay. Okay. You kick it off yet? No, I'm waiting on you. All right. I'd like to declare the town special town meeting open. If you would all please rise and join with me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to... Thank you. Thank you all for coming. The clerk, if you would be kind enough to read the notice.
I thought my speaking parts ended here. To either of the constables of the town of Pepperell in said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, as for said, you are hereby required to notify and to warn the inhabitants of said town qualified according to law to vote in state, county, district, and town affairs to assemble at the... Nissetisit Middle School in said town on Monday, the 19th of June, A.D., 2017, at 7:00 P.M., and to act on the following articles.
Did somebody make a comment of the way you pronounced that the last time?
I didn't do so well last time. I'm not doing any better this time.
Okay. Thank you for all coming. Just a couple of ground rules. In lieu of the storm, I do want to point out the exits, which are on either side here, the rear, and there are exits for the people onstage off to the side as well. Ground rules, oh, by the way, I'm your host or your moderator for the evening, and thank you for the opportunity. When you decide you want to speak on something, please come down to the mics that are here. I believe they are turned on, right? And state your name and where your street address is if you want to speak to an article. All I ask is, we stay on focus, we stay with the article that we are discussing at that particular point in time, and it does not get personal. So with that being said, Article One is before us. Turn it on.
We don't want it too loud. It's a preliminary motion relative to non-voters, if I may make that before we start.
Do it again slowly. It didn't seem to work.
I could just shout really loud.
Don't shout.
All right. Is this one working?
Test, test.
All right. I can speak really loud. We have a preliminary motion beforehand? If that's okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I move that the moderator may allow non-voters or non-residents to speak on issues related to town meeting warrant articles where appropriate. Now it kicks in.
You have it. Is the motion seconded? Yeah. There are taxpayers amongst us that don't reside in town, but they, over the years, such as the chief of police who lives in Groton, we allow them to speak before the body, and that's the purpose of this article. Questions? Comments? All those in favor of allowing non-voters to express an opinion on a certain article for this meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay. Now, citizens petition? Is that how we're doing this? Who's reading it? Hi.
Crystal Jeffries.
Is it on? Tap it.
Crystal Jeffries, 22 healed. Article One, citizens petition. Petition to hold a special town meeting to discuss public safety issues to include dispatch regionalization and purchase of an ambulance for the town of Pepperell.
Okay, we have a motion. Of course, we're holding the meeting. Is there a second? Okay. She, oh, she was reading. Oh. Oh, you didn't make the motion. Ah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Forget it. Go ahead.
What are you directing me to do?
Right.
I move to make a motion to see if the town will appropriate the amount not to exceed $300,000, oh, I'm sorry, Article One. I move to make a motion to petition to hold a special town meeting to discuss public safety issues to include dispatch regionalization and purchase of an ambulance for the town of Pepperell.
Okay, go ahead. Do you want to speak? Try it. It's, it's, lights on. Yeah, go ahead.
One of the problems with this, with this petition article, the petition article accomplished its purpose. It was to get a special town meeting to deal with the ambulance and also the RECC issue. Okay? The problem with the way the petition article was written, you know, is I don't know how you could frame a motion to do this because the RECC is beyond the scope of town meeting. Okay? So I would suggest that, to move things along, Articles Two and Article Three cover everything that could possibly be under the petition article. Okay? I would suggest that the best motion for the petition article, since it's accomplished its purpose, called the town meeting, and got two articles placed on it, the best motion for this would be to take no further action on this article. All right?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Want to make that motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Motion to take no action on that has been made. All in favor? All right. Okay. We go to Article One, uh, Two, excuse me. Are you reading that as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Article Two, ambulance purchase, citizens petition. I make a motion to see if the town will appropriate the amount not to exceed $300,000 from free cash to be expended by the fire chief for the purchase of a new ambulance, including related incidental costs, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion is made. Do we have a second? Fincom. You, because we're spending money, you, I'm required to ask you.
The finance committee voted...
Can you?
The finance committee voted not to approve this article. Instead, we have another article, and we believe that the recommended article that we have follows a financially prudent funding plan, and it's written by the town accountant. This plan avoids the exclusive use of free cash. I move that the town vote $289,592 for the purchase of a new ambulance to be funded by appropriating $70,000 from the receipts reserved for appropriation, separate account as a used for these five years. And seven, the use of receipts from the sale of real estate, appropriating $158,805.06 from overlay surplus, and by appropriating the balance of $60,786.94 from free cash certified as of July 1, 2016.
That motion is made and seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay. So what we're doing now is we're discussing how to finance it based on what the finance committee just, just did. We'll come back to the other question unless we decide to go this route. I have two motions. Right, that's, that's, what's that? Uh, yeah, I heard a second down at the end, and I heard a second on hers. You can't if you can't speak into it. Yeah.
The difference between the two is... Oh, thank you. Here we go. Yay! We're on. The difference between the... Oh, my God. Yeah, it's all good.
You got one motion on the floor. You can't have another motion on top of it. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
You deal with the first one, you discuss with the first motion, and then you spend the second.
Right. Hence what I was going to say.
You can discuss what you prefer.
That's what I was going to, so, I, I was going to say that, and the, the difference between, it's miniscule, the, the correct amount is the 289 and change amount, that's the actual cost, and it all, in essence, comes out of free cash, it's just allocated slightly different, none of it is dead or anything like that, but the, the broken-down component allows us to use money that is in other sources outside of free cash that we actually have to use.
Is this open to a question?
What's that?
Is this open to a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
That amount that you're referring to from the alternate sources is available as of, hey? And just so I'm clear, it's stated up there, the sale of real estate account, has that already happened? Okay. And, I'm sorry? Okay. And then the remaining 678694 from free cash, that was as of July 1, 2016, so this past fiscal year? Okay. I don't think I have any follow-up questions.
Okay. No, what, what I guess, what we're getting at is finance committee has laid out a path by which to finance it. On the one hand, the first article, or the first motion handcuffs the town and says it's all coming from free cash.
Yes.
The second motion, which is a different way of coming with the same result, has a specific path, and on those items that they are talking about, they have to come to town meeting to spend it anyways, and by doing that, in other words, for, for the receipts reserved from, the appropriating 70 from receipts reserved for appropriation, that has to be appropriated at town meeting, which this would do.
Not wait till the fall town meeting?
Otherwise, it's, otherwise, some of these, the sale of real estate and such, those assets sit in the bank until it is time, bleh, the town decides to come before a town meeting and ask to spend it. By putting that article the way they have, they are setting a path to pay for it not all out of free cash, but utilizing existing funds.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn.
Are you okay?
I do have a follow-up question.
Okay.
So is this considered an amendment to Article Two, or is this a motion?
Right now, I'm kind of allowing a little leeway.
Stick to your point of order.
Yeah, your point of order is it discussing a motion that's not on the floor yet. You know, you can't have one, you can't have two motions on the floor at the same time dealing with the same subject matter.
And they're discussing the second one. We've got to take care of the first one before we discuss that one.
That's true.
That's true.
However, you know, we...
However, nothing.
Yeah, wait a minute. I was going to say, we can do this, the old easy way or the hard way, okay? We can do it one at a time. We have two, we have two, we have one motion on the floor, and another motion which the finance commission would like to make, okay? Now, if the motion that's on the floor, I mean, if, if, if what the finance committee commission has, has stated is acceptable, your motion could be withdrawn, and the finance commission, the motion could be voted, then, then made and voted. Okay? Is that, does that sound right?
Withdraw that motion, withdraw it, then talk about that one.
That's exactly right. Withdraw this, and then talk about the other one.
But we don't want to do it uneven-handed. We want everybody to understand exactly what's going on, Phil. So, all right? I want everybody coming out of here and understanding that everything was done above board. That's all I want. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to give up the microphone for the lady behind me. She has a question about Article Two.
Lori, sorry, Lori Levesque, two first half. Quick question. It doesn't seem that Mark Andrews is here tonight, but I had read an article that he had spoken to on Friday, and one of the things that I felt like was insinuated was that come fall town meeting, that even if the ambulance had already been purchased, it could be put through in the fall as a debt exclusion. So my question is, regardless of what we do tonight, is that the intent of the Board of Selectmen to come fall meeting, try and override what happens tonight?
No, no.
Well, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know when he actually talked to them, but there was an article through Neshoba Valley Voice.
There was originally the expectation of putting this on as a debt exclusion, but there were timing issues with that. He had...
Yeah, yeah. Excuse me. They had considered a debt exclusion, however, there was not enough time to put it on the ballot, okay? There was, there was, there was not enough time between the ballot and the town meeting. You have to have a certain amount of time, and they were a buck short and a day late, as the saying goes. So that's basically it. That's not, that's off the table.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
And we, are you on? You're on. Taking it. You can't have... And we decided not to go that route, but Mark is really sick. That's why he's not here today. I'm sorry, I should have said that right at the beginning, but it wouldn't have been safe for him to drive, that's how sick he is, so...
No worries. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, sir. I don't think it's on.
I think everybody needs to shout today.
Oh, you got it. River Pillsbury, 18 Maple Street, Lot 58. I'm not in favor of withdrawing the motion. We went around, we got the signatures needed for the purchase, and the citizen motion should stand, and that's what we should vote on tonight.
Dave Holden, 25 Nashville Road. I just have a question. Over the last several town meetings I've been through, motions got put on the warrant, and then they got modified. Are you allowed to actually put a new motion in front of the meeting, which the finance committee... We're playing with two now, and we're playing with fire.
No, no, I'm not talking about the two. I understand that. There was only three for tonight. Wasn't one...
You want to add a fourth?
I'm wondering, allowed to add motions at the meeting? That's my only question. Or do you have to modify a motion?
You, you can make motions, yes. Okay. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it have been a lot cleaner if somebody from the planning board would just amend your original motion?
From the selectman?
From this lady right here.
First of all, it's a, it's a citizens' motion. It's a, it's a, it's a, all, all three, all three articles that were placed on the warrant were, were citizens' articles, the petition articles. Now, I am, by statutorily, I am not supposed to even review them. Citizens' petitions go on the warrant verbatim. They don't even change a definite article in them, okay? And the problem with the first, the first article was that, as we, as we state, in having a motion framed, part of it was, was beyond the scope of town meeting, and that was with, and that was, basically, it took no action. The second motion has a lump sum there, $300,000 to be taken from free cash. Now, the finance commission has another motion they would like to make that, which is, which is, which is, which they just recited, in place of the first motion, but you must dispose of this motion first. It's going to be voted up, down, or withdrawn.
But isn't it legal by Roberts rules to amend a motion?
Yes.
I suppose you could do that.
Yeah, you can do that.
And I think it would be cleaner if that had been done.
Yeah, okay, it's possible. Yes, ma'am?
First off, I want to say thank you to everyone who partook in the citizens' petition, number one. The reason this happened was so that we can expedite the purchase of the ambulance, and the allocation of the free cash was definitely the initial goal, and we achieved that. We got it to the floor, and what I see right now, and anyone can argue with me, is this is another way to get the ambulance purchased. My question, I was just speaking with the moderator, is, my concern is getting this ambulance purchased yesterday. The way this is laid out by the finance committee, is there anything that's going to delay this purchase? Okay. That is my main goal. If you're telling us that the appropriation from different sources are up there, and it's for this purpose, then I don't see it detrimental not to use the $300,000 in cash. I think this is the sweet spot that I was questioning a couple of weeks ago at the Board of Selectmen meeting. It's apparent to me that a lot of work was done to come up with this. What I don't see that I want to, I just want to revisit, is the roughly $56,000 cash, or, I'm sorry, $56,000 that was originally allocated for improvements for the 2005 that we discussed a couple meetings ago. Ms. Zanudakis, you, you found that cash. Is, is, can that be used still? Do you know the 56 I'm talking about?
There is an allocation as part of the capital program relative to specific equipment that will still get used with that particular amount. And if that amount is not used, it gets turned back in that regard. But we're purchasing it in this fiscal year. That particular money is in next year's budget.
I understand.
So that's why it's segregated differently here, because we're now in fiscal 17, that part of the capital plan was in fiscal 18. If we had done this in the fall, that would have been part of the formula.
I'm clear on that. Thank you for that clarification. The other question then I have about this motion by the finance committee, when did this happen? Just in this past week? How did you come to those numbers? How did you find these sources? What's your method?
Can you save the information from the town accountant? Can you save the information about the financial sources from the town accountant?
Just shout, John.
Can you save the information from the town accountant? I wrote it up, I didn't want her to vote it on on Thursday.
I can give you more detail if you want it.
Yes, please.
The $70,000 has to do with land that was sold over near the senior center. That came from funds from that sale, and the check has just come in, literally in the last week, week and a half. The 158, 805.06 is the result of effort with the town administrator and the assessor and our town accountant to get money released from the overlay surplus, also, that has happened within the last week, and that is how we got to where we were. There was a lot of effort that was put into working with these sources to make sure that we had other alternative funds to use, just instead of just pulling from free cash.
Thank you.
Are you all done?
I just want to reiterate one more thing to the public. Again, the reason that we're here today was because of all of our efforts, and I think that we've all arrived at something that I can agree with, as far as getting this ambulance purchased sooner than later. The only additional statement I'd like to make is with regards to crew safety that I want to get on record.
Crew, what?
Crew safety, the paramedics. And, and again...
Is that on this, on the purchase?
Of the purchase of the ambulance?
Yeah.
Okay. If I'm going off beat, I'm okay to accept that. Thank you.
Discussion of...
Discussion of...
Okay.
Is this on? All right, sorry. Are you swayed one way or the other, so we can get...
I think that if anyone else would like to pose any questions on Article Two, they should be allowed to do that before it's dismissed.
Well, no, what I'm asking for, before we can, is, finance as opposed to the other? Do you want to withdraw the original and go with the way they've mapped it, or not?
Not before the public has their opportunity to ask questions.
Well, that...
If, if the motion is withdrawn, can it be brought back in?
That might fall under reconsideration.
All right, so at this evening's meeting, then, if she does withdraw that, she can still bring it back in and move to reconsider, so we can hear, so we don't have to have both going at the same time. And a follow-up to that, the 158, 805, coming from overlay surplus, if that didn't come out of overlay surplus, and, and the, the motion was voted on and accepted to buy this out of free cash, what happens to that 158? And I'm having a hard time understanding what the overlay surplus is, and maybe that's a story for another time, but...
So, so what happens at town meeting is, when you vote on an appropriation of funds, let's say from that overlay surplus, if you vote in the affirmative to take it for this particular purchase, then it, and that account gets closed out, all right? But if you do not, it sits there until somebody else later on in the future at another town meeting decides to attempt to utilize that 158 for the purpose. In other words, you know, it, it looks like, it looks like... Cash versus something else, but this... Town meeting, we move accounts to pay for certain, or in the spring town meeting, we do the same thing. But it could sit there for a while. Thank you. Where is she? What? Maureen? Overlay surplus? You want to speak to it? If you would?
Hi, Maureen Bolger, town assessor. The overlay surplus is set aside each year when we, when we set the tax rate, and it's for abatements and exemptions. So usually, we, we set aside enough money to make sure that any abatements and exemptions are covered. On occasion, there's money left, and what we ended up doing to, to get this amount of money is we closed out, because we had two ATB cases with Verizon that have been hanging around for seven years. So we closed, we, we settled the suit, the Mass, the Mass DOR settled the suit with Verizon, so there was only $4,000 that they wanted from each year of 2010 and 2011. So we had a lot of money left, because we had kept a lot, because we, we weren't sure what was going to happen with the Verizon suit. So, so we closed out 2010, we closed out 2011, 2012, which really didn't have much in it, 2013, 2014, and we left $20,000 in 2015 to come up with this amount. And these, you know, exemptions, there's no ATB cases against these years, there's no exemptions that are outstanding, there's no anything that's outstanding. So this was just money that was sitting there for more, more or less...
Where is she? What? Maureen, overlay surplus, you want to speak to it?
If you would.
Hi, Maureen Bolger, Town Assessor. The overlay surplus is set aside each year when we, when we set the tax rate. And it's for abatements and exemptions. So usually we set aside enough money to make sure that any abatements and exemptions are covered. On occasion, there's money left. And what we ended up doing to get this amount of money is we closed out, because we had two ATB cases with Verizon that have been hanging around for seven years. So we closed, we settled the suit, the Mass, the Mass DOR settled the suit with Verizon. So there was only $4,000 that they wanted from each year of 2010 and 2011. So he had a lot of money left, because we had kept a lot, because we weren't sure what was gonna happen with the Verizon suit. So, so we closed out 2010, we closed out 2011, 2012, which really didn't have much in it, 2013, 2014, and we left $20,000 in 2015 to come up with this amount. And these, you know, exemptions, there's no ATB cases against these years. There's no exemptions that are outstanding. There's no anything that's outstanding. So this was just money that was sitting there for more or less a rainy day in case we needed it. So this money, you know, if we released it and we didn't need the ambulance, it would have eventually gone to free cash anyway.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Wayne Page. First my question is for town council. Since we have this, since we have this petition already in front of us, should we not just vote on that and say yes or no? And then, then if there's gonna be a motion to make an amendment to it, vote on that separately instead of trying, instead of saying, okay, we're not gonna withdraw it. Let's vote yes. If you want to amend it afterwards, vote yes again.
Yeah, normally it's the amendment first, so...
So what could be done is somebody could make a, a motion to amend the amendment. Okay, you vote the amendment first and then see what you want to do with the, with the main motion after that, okay?
Does that sound like something you want to do?
I make a motion that we amend Article 2, citizen's petition. $289,592 from the purchase of the new ambulance. We can finally try appropriating $70,000 from the receipt for appropriate sale of real estate and house. Amendment. General law 44, section 7, section 63. We are using receipts from the sale of real estate and by appropriating $158,805.06 from overlay surplus and by appropriating the balance of $60,786.94 from free cash certified as of July 1st, 2016.
Motion made. Do we have a second? Okay, thank you. On the amendment, you want to speak? I do, but I want to hear what you're gonna say next. I didn't hear him. No, no, what, what I'm saying is it's your turn.
Tony DeSanzo, 19 Village Road. As I sit up here, a lot has transpired to, for my point. Finance Board has made in a motion to amend the original motion. Now you need to vote on the amendment. And then you can vote on the motion and the people who did the mo, who brought it here will have their, their project.
Yep, yep. Did you want to speak on the amendment, sir?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Grove Appeals for 18 Maple Street Lot 58. Unfortunately, I don't trust the town as far as I can throw them. So the petition, we beat the streets to get this petition. And it should be passed as written to purchase the ambulance with $300,000 of free cash. And that's all it should be. Unfortunately, I just can't trust the town. I don't trust those figures that you have up there. And, you know, that's the way that it should be.
Okay. On the amendment, madam? You don't want to speak to the amendment? You do? Well, are you on the amendment? Well, before you cut him off, Phil, I'd like to at least know where he's going. Come to the mic, come to the mic.
If the end result here is that the town gets an ambulance and the money stays in free cash, then why not vote on the first motion? We buy the ambulance out of free cash and the town can move this money into free cash at fall town meeting, correct? They just said it will end up in free cash.
Eventually, if we vote it that way.
Okay, but the other money would be not the 70,000?
Right.
So that money, where will that money go?
Shits.
It'll just sit right where it is? In 2020, we're gonna need another ambulance. It could do that, right?
You could, but then we'll, we'll deplete free cash when we have money that we can use that won't do that.
Phil, you had a question, madam? Did you want to ask the question?
No, she's letting me go, sir.
No, I'm the only one that lets you go.
Be my guest.
She would like you to go, go.
All right with you?
Yeah.
Phil Durno, 9 Chestnut Street. The Finance Committee's got a motion on the, on this...
On the article.
On the article. How can the Finance Committee make an amendment to the people's motion?
Go ahead. Of course, anybody can amend it.
The Finance Committee's motion, so-called, as you quite correctly pointed out, was out of order. Because it, look, listen, there was a motion on, there is a motion on the floor, okay? And that's the central motion that's on the floor. The Finance, they're in as a motion. It's competing motions. You were quite correct, you can't have two motions on the floor at the same time. However, you can have a motion to amend the central motion on the floor. That is what's on the floor right now. The motion to amend the central motion is to make it basically include exactly source of funding, et cetera, et cetera. So what you, where you do it is you vote to either accept or reject that amendment. And if the amendment is accepted, then you vote on the main motion, which, which basically carries the whole thing, okay?
The amendment can be made by the same people that got the motion?
The motion is out of order. I'm allowed to question.
I agree with you.
Chris?
Christie Simone, 5 Wheeler Road. First of all, I want a new ambulance. I came here this evening expecting to vote for the original article. And I expected to have to fight for it, because I was under the impression that the town administrator was gonna try to do a, a bond outside of two and a half. But now it seems that the town accountant and the FinCom have done their job. They've come out upward away of funding a new ambulance that makes fiscal sense. What does not make fiscal sense is taking an additional $300,000 out of free cash after the amount of money we took out of it at spring town meeting. We get rated for our bonds based on the amount of free cash. So it gets us our ambulance, it doesn't raise our tax dollars. Somebody did a good job.
Would you like to ask your question? Yep. Come, come a little closer?
Margie LaFleur, 27 Maple Street. Are these numbers hard numbers, hard and fast? So we aren't pigeonholing ourselves into a dollar amount that when we need it and we purchase it, it's gonna be more than what our expectations are? And are we getting all the bang for our buck with that number? I'm, I'm just asking. Okay, it is. Okay, thank you.
Toby Tyler, 34 Jewett Street, Fire Chief. The 289-592 is a good number for, to purchase a new ambulance. The only problem I see with this is it doesn't come under the control of the fire chiefs. So it doesn't say who's gonna spend the money, so. That's where, whereas the first motion did, so. It just is the town, so.
But we're gonna be going on the first motion. We're just talking about funding.
Yeah, yeah, you, when we vote, if we vote and pass the amendment, then we have to vote on the original motion, so that would take care of all of that. Yes, ma'am?
Crystal Jeffries, 22 Heald. I just have a question about the free cash certification date. I thought the free cash was certified August 5th, 2016.
Fiscal year starting July 1st, 2016. The actual certification date may have been later, but it's for fiscal year starting July 1st.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Anybody else on the amendment? Are we ready? All in favor of the amendment, we'll try a voice vote. Please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, I'm gonna say. All right, now back to the main motion. Are there questions? We've resolved the funding source, sources. Back to the, any other questions on the main motion? Don't have to.
22 Heald, so what are we asking about now?
Are we gonna buy the ambulance? We've taken care of the funding source.
Okay, and like the chief mentioned, is this money gonna be his to use under his control rather than the town administrator? Okay. Thanks.
It's your motion. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Article 3. Thank you for your patience, by the way. All right. Who has Article 3? Article 3, who has that? Yep?
I know this microphone is not, my bad. I had to find a live one.
Hello?
Before we move on to the next article, I simply would like to invite anyone who doesn't trust what goes on up here, that we have an opening on the Finance Committee. Last Thursday, we went through all of this. The agenda, what we covered, was posted for the public to see. And as I looked into this very spacious room, not one person was there to moder, to moderate or to look after or to suggest what we were doing. So I say it one more time. The Finance Committee, although it's not a glamour shot when it comes to other things in this town, still has an opening. And I invite anyone through John Ladek and the Selectmen to pony up and to make yourself known for that position. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Article 3?
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me? All right.
It'll catch.
Amanda Raymond, 82 Oak Hill Street. Article 3, non-binding resolution, citizen's petition. I motion to see if the town will vote to adopt the following non-binding resolution opposing regionalizing dispatch with the Northern Middlesex Regional Emergency Communications Center, N-M-R-E-C-C District. Whereas, at its April 10th, 2017 meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to enter into agreement with N-M-R-E-C-C. And whereas, at the April 10th, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting, the police chief, the fire chief, the communications director, and a police sergeant all spoke in opposition to entering into said agreement with N-M-R-E-C-C. And whereas, said police chief, fire chief, communications director, and police sergeant do not oppose regionalizing dispatch, but would rather regionalize with the town of Groton because of its bordering town. And whereas, the residents of Pepperell do not want to regionalize with Tewksbury, a town that is 25 miles away. And whereas, the annual savings for regionalizing with Tewksbury is $106,0039. The annual savings for regionalizing with Davens is $113,309. The annual savings for regionalizing with Groton is $151,309. And whereas, the population of Tewksbury is approximately 30,915. The population of Drakeitt is approximately 31,352. The population of Pepperell is 11,780. And whereas, Groton's Public Safety Access Point, PSAP, is currently up and running, N-M-R-E-C will not be up and running until 2019. Whereas now, therefore, be it resolved that the police, the people, sorry, of Pepperell, Massachusetts, one, hereby call on our Selectmen to null and void the contract with M-R-E-C-C; two, seek the advice of Regional Dispatch Committee formed September 28, 2015, comprised of David Scott, Police Chief, Toby Tyler, Fire Chief, David Stares, Communicator, Communications Director, and Frank Katuck, Katroki, excuse me if I mispronounced that.
Katrochi.
Katroki. Former Communications Director, Mark Andrews, Town Administrator, and follow its recommendations. Three, the Board of Selectmen hold community forums to educate and solicit feedbacks from its residents prior to entering into any future regionalization contracts or take any action relative thereto. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Ned, was this where you were speaking? Was this where you were? Yeah, I just, I just asked for an opinion of town council.
The article quite, excuse me, the article and the motion quite correctly stated this is a non-binding motion. The interesting thing about the statute which allows towns to enter into intermunicipal agreements to establish R-E-C-Cs, you know, Regional Emergency Communication Centers, is it specifies that in, in towns, the contracting authority, the approving authority is, is the Board of Selectmen, not the town meeting. It's kind of, it, it, many cases statutes will provide, in a city, for instance, the city council, act, acts on behalf of the city, and in towns, the town meeting will. In this statute, this, this particular statute, you know, general, general laws, section, chapter 6A, 18Q, specifically states that the awarding authority and the contracting authority is the Board of Selectmen. So therefore, there's, towns many times, you know, give sense of town meeting resolutions. It's more, it's something that they want, if the town meeting wishes to make its voice heard, that's what this resolution's for, okay? But I'm telling you that as far as being binding, it's not binding. It's clear, and it is in fact recited as a non-binding resolution. Thank you.
Comments, questions?
Mike Green, 19 June Street, so I've got a few questions about the petition. I guess, I don't know if everybody up there is gonna be able to answer them, but first is, would the police chief, fire chief, communications director, police sergeant have spoken in favor of any of the regionalizations during that Board of Selectmen's meeting? To your knowledge. Not all the residents of Pepperell don't want to regionalize with Tewksbury. Just go on the record as saying that. That's an incorrect statement that says that residents in general. I would question, I'd like to know where the annual savings numbers came from? Are those numbers that you guys have seen before? Okay. Okay. Sorry.
Talk to the, that are in the petition, because they don't match up with anything that we have seen. Just what we have put up, piece that was for our information session. What, $23,000? Okay, that's better. Okay, we can't, the Board of Selectmen, people up here cannot speak to any of the numbers in the petition article. We don't know where they came from. The information that we've been using and that was submitted out to the residents of the town talks about, you know, Pepperell being in line to gain over $247,000 in FY19, $326,000 in FY2000. Due with the equipment purchases, well as our operating costs, $160,000 a year in operating costs. So you'll have to ask the petition, the people who wrote the article about those, those numbers.
Okay, so that's a, that's an open question for anybody that wants to answer it. So the population, and I'm to understand, this is a question, we have a, we have a one-third vote in what happens with the management of, so, okay, we're one, one-third of the other towns, but we actually have an equal vote with them, which I think is actually a win for us. In Groton, we would only be splitting with Groton, so it'd just be... So it was your vote in Groton, okay? So basically, if we, with Groton, there wouldn't be any sway for us to say, get our people hired or anything like that, or be on any of the boards that manage it or anything like that.
It goes deeper than that. It actually goes to setting operational policies and procedures. It's not just hiring of people. It's the operational procedures for the actual safety structure, as well as the budgetary component. We wouldn't have a say in anything.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, the, there's numbers here that say $30,000, $31,000, and $11,000 designed to say that we're not gonna be equal, but we actually are equal. Okay, thank you.
Carolyn Adab, 19 Deerfield Drive. Did want to just make a comment to the...
Did want to just make a comment to the, in regards to what the Town Council had mentioned, that the Board of Selectmen does have the controlling power to make this decision. In my opinion, I feel that the Board of Selectmen should have done their due diligence to reach out to the residents to get their opinion and to get their feedback on what they wanted. So I'd like... And that... So I just wanted to say that. So yes, I understand the Mass General Law says that, and I understand that. But we voted for these Board of Selectmen because we truly believed in our hearts that they are going to do what we wanted. So, just to make that up. And also Melissa just commented in regards to setting up operational procedures in the North Middlesex Regional Information Session. They also said the same thing, that we had to set up these operational procedures within our North Middlesex Regional Council of Governments with the other towns. So these operational procedures have to be set up regardless of who we go with. Yes.
Let me just address that particular... Go ahead.
Yeah, I did watch that video three times. Regardless, the operational procedures were mentioned, and that all of the details in the operational procedures had to be set up and had to be written out for parties involved.
For the N-M-R-E-C-C, yes. But for Groton, no. They would make all those decisions. And they already have an existing procedure set in place. We would be walking into their existing procedures. The other facility is brand-new, so the procedures get to be developed, which means our chiefs get a say in the operational procedures that they are comfortable with.
So, again, going back to these meetings and going back to April 10, and knowing that Chief Scott, Chief Tyler, in the article mentioned, were against this and wanted to go with Groton or a closer town, and they were okay with these operational procedures, don't you think those people have knowledge at hand?
I don't disagree with you in concept, but our job as the Board of Selectmen is to make the decisions that we feel are in the best interest of the town. And the individuals at that point in time didn't feel that us not having a vote was in the best interest of the town. That's a big consideration.
The town... All of the residents or any of the residents, be the town...
I understand that. But our job is to do what we feel is in the best interest of the town.
You're hot?
We have to look at things from a fiscal perspective, as well as an asset management perspective, as well as a procedural perspective.
And did you do any research on the other regional communication?
Yes.
So why is it that the Town of Billerica and the Town of Chelmsford have not joined North Middlesex Regional?
Well, first of all, I don't live in Chelmsford or those other towns. From my perspective, I was elected to do what I felt was the best for the total population of the town, not necessarily a small group of individuals. Secondly, when we looked at both opportunities, actually, from my recollection of April 10, the chiefs weren't really in favor of doing any regionalization. They would have preferred to kept the status quo. Okay? This is a project that was, that's been going on since 2009. And in the end, what we will get is a completely state-of-the-art facility that actually is going to improve our services and reduce our response times from what we have today. You know, we all have cellphones. We have no problem with picking up our cellphone and calling anywhere in the country, if not the world. Does, well, you have telephones, so it's easy. I mean, communications in today's day and age is almost, it's instantaneous. So the 25 miles really is, you know, other than the fact it is 25 miles, the communications is instantaneously from the dispatch center. So when you pick up a call, when you actually dial 911, it'll go to our center and not go to the state police. So that will drastically improve our response time.
And, thank you, Mr. Nutter. As far as that reverse 911 goes, that was going to be implemented regardless. So I don't know if that's a real valid opinion or a valid comment. The other thing is, I'd like to mention is that what you're saying is really rhetoric from PowerPoint slides, from white papers that were written. It is not, nothing that is carved in stone and solid history. We can go back and look at various articles from other communities that have regional centers that are failing and that are dispersing. Thank you.
Mr. Holden, I've got two questions that I'll ask, and then I'll bail out and listen to the answer. The first is, the individuals, fire chief, police chief, communications director, and I forgot who the other one was, that voiced their opinion on the 10th, is that still their opinion? If they could answer. And the second question is, if that is their opinion and those are the users of the system, why didn't the Board of Selectmen listen to them? Toby, Dave? Anybody want to respond to that?
Dave Stares, Communications Director, 6 Pine Street. It is still my opinion that Groton is our best option.
David Scott, Police Chief. My opinion has not changed. I'd still like to keep dispatch right where it is. I understand that there may be reasons that we have to change. If possible, I would have preferred to have a regional center in Pepperell. After that, then my choice would be Groton.
Toby Tyler, 34 Jewett Street, Fire Chief. And yes, I think Groton is our best option.
Bill Greathed, 126 Brookline Street. And it is still my opinion that it either stays here or it goes to Groton.
Bill Gekis, Lawrence Street. I had a couple of questions. First one was that it is the Board of Selectmen's decision to do this with the town administrator. What about the budget? Do we have to vote on the budget as a town when it comes to the budget for this?
Well, this is in the budget that was voted on, what, a month ago at annual town meeting? In other words, we vote on a budget for this, not for this particular thing, but for ambulance, police, and everything else.
Right, the ambulance and the police. I was talking about the regionalization center, the regional center.
It won't happen until we do the fiscal 2019 budget because they have to build the facility first. So we don't kick any money out until the facility exists. So in the fiscal 2019 budget, that's when we, it would be in that budget. So in essence, the next budget cycle, next year. And it'll only be about a half-year of that particular cycle. I think it's intended to open January-ish of 2019, around that time period. So it'll be next year's budget.
Okay, but what happens with the budget, though, if the people don't vote for the budget to go through?
Then we end up without the communication system if we don't have it in the budget. We don't, if we can't pay for it, we don't have the service.
So we'll lose out if everybody... Correct? So if we're going through all this now, and then the Town of Pepperell votes not to, not for the budget, then we still lose it, right?
We have, if there's no money in the budget to pay for the service, we don't have the service. So in essence, when you vote the budget, you're not voting for an R-A-C-C or not an R-A-C-C. You're voting for a line item for the communication budget. You're voting for a police department budget or fire budget with whatever's built into their budget. So if you vote that down, those services aren't there.
Okay, now, my other question was, Mr. Metta said also that the telephone calls, whether they're 25 minutes away and stuff like that. So right now, we have, God forbid, something happens in front of Mariano's and somebody calls 911 and they say it's in front of Mariano's and they call from a landline. It goes right to Pepperell Communications, correct?
Correct.
So, right now, when we do that and they call from a landline, because if they call from a cellphone, it goes to the state police or it goes to Essex County, correct?
Correct.
So if they call, once this is all up, it's going to go to Tewksbury directly from a landline.
It's going to go directly to our dispatch center.
So if there's something catastrophic going on, something very dangerous, and all of a sudden somebody's panicking, they call up and it's like, you know, somebody got, God forbid, somebody got hurt in front of Mariano's or in front of CNS Pizza or whatever, they're going to have to think about a physical address before they give, it's not going to be that response time, that critical, time-critical situation.
Well, it's going to show up where, it's going to show them where the call's originating from. So it'll show that the person happens to be located, if they're calling from Main Street in front of Mariano's, it'll show that it's there. It's in that general vicinity. No matter when you call, you got to ask, you know, you got to verify the address of where the actual accident is. Because if someone sees a fire down the street and they call the fire department, they got to tell them it's the house down the street, not the house that's calling.
Right, but I mean, like what it was with the fire that happened on Nashua Road, they called up and they said we're on Nashua Road right by the senior center. They knew exactly where it was. That's critical time right there. That, that's all that I just wanted to get across. That's critical time. I mean, it's something that's in our town that we want to look out for ourselves, you know? Not Tewksbury where they have 31,000 people, Drakeett where they have 31,000 people. We have 11,000 people. You got two votes. Don't you think, in your opinion, that those two fire chiefs and police chiefs are going to look out for their two towns that are bigger first, especially one that has two major highways going through it?
911 doesn't work that way, Bill. 911 comes in, it's answered call by call by call by call.
I'm talking about when they're making their... I'm sorry.
It doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't look at that and say, this is a Pepperell call, this is a Drakeett call, this is a Tewksbury call. You call 911, it's going to be answered by the order to which the calls came in.
What happens if it's a regional emergency, such as the ice storm? Where we had a lot of, like, as I said the last meeting, there's every situation, there's a command post, correct?
System out. We can, that we'd like to have a center or a backup console here to deal with catastrophes where you've got a regionalizational problem like that. So let's say like the ice storm, or any big catastrophe. The whole idea now is that we have a blank sheet of paper so that we can build out the system to do exactly what we want it to do. If we go anywhere else, we don't have that option.
I just feel if we, I don't care if we have the top-of-the-line console, if we don't have anybody in there working it, it doesn't do us any good. That's all.
Our console now is not the top of the line. It's extremely old.
Oh, I know it is.
Much of our equipment now is very old.
I understand, but I mean, it's just like saying it. We said that if we upgrade the console, we have a console in there. If we don't have anybody in it to work, I don't care if it's an old console or a new console, if we don't have anybody to work in there, we'll go with it.
That gets back to the operational procedures that will be established by the chiefs.
Rover Pillsbury, 18 Maple Street, Lot 58. I have a couple of questions. The Essex County Regional Call Center that Mr. Andrews was very into getting the town in when he was, the Town of Wenham, when he was administrator there, that call center has just lost a town. Town of Amesbury has pulled out of that call center due to problems with calls. The distance between Amesbury and Middleton is probably a little bit more than Tewksbury, but there are definite problems there. Additionally, that call center has run the past two years in a $2.5 million deficit because it is run by the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department has to put that money in. Tewksbury will not be run by the Sheriff's Department. So that means that we're going to be on the hook for a portion of money that isn't going to be covered or isn't going to be received because the theoretical grants are not a guarantee for, for the town. So we have that situation now.
The funding that comes from, for regional dispatch centers, actually, we all pay for every time we pay our phone bill. It's been put into the taxes, into the actual tax on your phone bill, and that money can only be used for this type of communication. So it would take a change in the law for that funding to now, to go away.
Well, there's that, there's that money, but there's additional grants that everybody's banking on from the state.
It all comes from the same pot of money from your communications tax.
In researching the town website for Public Safety Committee, unfortunately, the bylaw is, was amended 15 years ago, but the committee that the Selectmen appointed in researching this decision does not include what the bylaw requires for a safety committee. So the amendment reads that the town hereby authorize the Selectmen to create a Public Safety Committee represented by the fire, police, ambulance, highway superintendent, communications, civil defense, and building inspection departments, as well as the Selectmen and Board of Health to coordinate, facilitate, and report on public safety. This bylaw would trump that committee that you had, that you had done. When this was done in, when this was done 15 years ago, the town regionalization wasn't a, you know, wasn't even on the scope. And because of that, the committee that was formed, in my opinion, goes against the bylaw and is invalid. That's all I have.
Ma'am?
Linda Burns, Tarbell Street. Did you say that cellphone calls will be covered by this regional center? And you're sure about that?
Yes.
Because I had to call one time and got the state police.
You will now. If you do that...
I'll get the state police again?
Yeah, if you call your cellphone today, even in Pepperell, you'll get the state police. The new facilities that are going online, like this one, they're integrating that technology into the new facilities. But if you go into an existing facility, you're not going to have that capability. It's another advantage for this one because we have the ability to incorporate that technology. Going into an existing one, we would not.
So the Groton Center does not use?
No.
Thank you.
Dave Lavender, 19 Deerfield Drive. First, I'd like to say, you know, the Town Council said that the law allows the Board of Selectmen to make the decision. I'd like to say there's the spirit, the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. It would have been nice to have been able to be involved in the decision and the process. We've been told that this has been being discussed since 2009. I went back through. I found three Board of Selectmen meetings that had it as an action item, going back. I don't know if I necessarily went all the way back to 2009, but I went back quite a ways and I found three. Two of them, the one you decided and the one August 28, 2015. So I don't know how much it could have been discussed. I know also that there was a committee. I wish Mr. Andrews were here to kind of clarify some things because at the last, the informational meeting, at one point he referred to it as an ad hoc committee. Another time he referred to it as a working committee. So they didn't apparently have to have meetings, didn't have to have votes. Did they have to write up a report up a report that they submitted to you to help you make this decision? And if they did, is there a copy we can see? I'm wondering really what, what you used to make your decision to do this, you know? Can you?
So, there are different components to our meetings, there's the action items where we vote, but then there's the town administrator's report where we get updates on things that are pending, so there were numerous meetings where we were given updates on what the committee had been doing, their progress, what they learned, but we didn't take action on it, that was part of the town administrator's report.
So, the town administrator funneled this information to you? There was never actually a report that over in the corner were involved in submitting to you?
That's his job.
Well...
That's his job, he's, that he's supposed to give us that information, that's his job.
Isn't it your job to kind of determine how he arrived at this information? And did you?
And in many, and in many of those nights when that was on, others were invited to be present.
I can't hear you right now.
And when, when those were on for his town administrator reports, depending on what was on and the level of information, others were invited to attend from the departments to give us more information as well, and what they'd learned at that particular juncture. Wasn't just always coming from Mark, but that is his job.
I, I understand that, I'm just wondering, it's all funneled through one man, it seems it would be pretty easy for one man to put his own spin on it, on purpose or accidentally, I don't know. Thank you.
Actually, I had the gentleman behind you. I, I just wanted to clear up the wireless call information for the, for the woman on Tarbell Street, if I could, please. So, there's been some confusion on, or some discussion on wireless 911 calls and how they're routed. The way it works is, right now, other than three centers, all 911 calls go to those three centers, Essex and two state police centers. When Tewksbury opens, it's, there's been talk that they're gonna be the, one of the first centers to, to take additional wireless calls. The equipment that's in place now, that we have, that Groton has, that Devens has, can accept wireless 911 calls, it's just a matter of the state allowing those various centers to accept those calls, is all it is. So, the equipment is, is in place, even in Pepperell, we just upgraded to it about four months ago, so it's just a matter of the state allowing us to accept those calls, is all it is.
All right, Frank Ducharme, Shirley Street. I'm probably like a lot of other people here that moved from the city to come to this nice little town, because we wanted it quiet. Nice, small government, no mayor, local decisions, we have professionals behind us that know what they're doing, and we're not funding them, we're pretending like they don't know how to run the business when they do know. One thing about public safety, I was in public safety almost thirty years. We keep it simple, if something was broken in our own houses, we would fix it, we wouldn't throw it out, we wouldn't look for somebody else to spend their money to promise us, we'll get it fixed for you, we cut our coat according to our cloth, we have a new high school, our taxes are gonna go up on that one, let's not create any more problems, give professional, whatever the radio, whatever, keep the house, let's buy a town. Let's, you know, we, we can fix it, we can fix it for ourself, we don't have to go outside, we gotta, we gotta very, we can do it, so, whatever the radio, whatever equipment they need, you buy an ambulance, you buy a radio, let the guys run it, that's all, okay? Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Raymond, eighty-two Oak Hill Street, again, three questions, if I can remember them all. Right now, the radios that we have are all shared with the DPW, Department of Public Works. When we go to Tewksbury, what happens to DPW? Who's gonna dispatch them, who's gonna take care of their radios, or are they just, what happens?
That is part of the operational procedures the chiefs need to develop, but ultimately, whatever needs to happen for the DPW to be built into the equation will occur as well. If they, if they need equipment, they get equipment, it all gets built into it, but again, the chiefs have a very big job through the RACC, they have to develop all the policies and procedures, so a lot of these operational questions are things that they have to make sure that they address when they're putting their procedures in place.
So, DPW's gonna be radioed through Tewksbury as well, is the plan?
To, to the degree that they need to be, so, for whatever component of DPW is communication with air quotes around it based, then they would be built into that particular plan, but not everything with DPW is communication-based. Literally, all you're doing with the RAC is moving the console from one place to another, the way in which things occur still occur the same way.
How are we gonna be affected if more towns join the region? Like, right now, it's us, Drakeet, and Tewksbury, what happens if more towns start to join in, and they start to join in later on down the road?
So, as more towns go in, then the ability to have more staff has to increase based on the size and need of the towns that are involved, again, we're literally moving from point A to point B, but our operating procedures, again, that get developed by our chiefs, the way we do things stays the same. As you assimilate more towns, then you have to assimilate more space, more staff, but the facility itself is designed to be able to do that, to accommodate and assimilate more, more towns to come into it. They would obviously have additional staffing needs at that point, but that would be the biggest change at that point. Again, the calls come in in the order in which they come in, there's no preference town by town.
Okay, and to reiterate what you said again, you said it's the chiefs' call to do that.
To develop the operational procedure, yes, all, all six chiefs, so the three fire chiefs and EMS, they develop those procedures, the three police chiefs, they develop those procedures, that is part of what they need to do since it's a new center, so they can look at other centers that are out there, centers that have done really well, centers that haven't done really well, they can learn from the ones who are excelling, they can learn from the ones who aren't, work from the mistakes that other people have made and not make those same mistakes. When we had our informational session earlier this month, we had the regional 911 director there, and we had a fire chief and a police chief from active regional communication centers. One of them was from an established RACC that it's been in place for about five years, and the other one was a chief from a newer establishment, they're going through what we're going through now, they're just further along in the process with the new system that's coming into play, and they were able to offer some very significant and helpful feedback about the process, how it works, what they've seen, things that have worked well, things that haven't worked well. We have that resource, they offered their services as well as a resource, so that we could, you know, again, not recreate the wheel, you can look at what other people have done, and again, try not to make those same mistakes, that's the hope, is to succeed.
I understand what you're saying, but as a citizen, it's really hard to hear you say that you're gonna listen to your chiefs in that position, but you didn't listen to them going into it.
Well, my only response to that is, it's, that's the chiefs' jobs at that point, it's their jobs to go and build the, the operationals center, it's their job to do the actual procedures, it's not the administrator's job to do that, it has to be done by the chiefs, both in the police and fire, they're the ones that are gonna develop the best practices, they can have the opportunity to pull against anything in, in the country, as well as the world, is trying to find what's the best practices, and they get to adopt it, so in the end, they have to own the operational procedures for their departments.
My on, Christie Simone, five Wheeler Road. Generally, I think that our Board of Selectmen does a very good job, however, in this instance, I must respectfully disagree with your decision for a couple of reasons. One, this meeting should've been held before the contract was signed, not after the fact. And, two, to reiterate what's been said several different ways, to have ignored the advice of our three paid experts is mind-blowing, I don't understand why you'd ignore the police chief, fire chief, and communications director on this subject. Third point is, I've, you know, you, I think Melissa said it, you have to consider the fiscal, the, what's best for all the people of town, and she had a third reason, fiscally, according to those numbers up there, fiscally, it would be better to go somewhere else. As far as what's best for all the people of this town, well, you finally listened to all the people of this town, you should've listened to them before the decision was made. Last point, I'm hearing two selectmen defend this over and over again, but the third selectman is sitting there, apparently, I think, agreeing, I'd like to know what the third selectman has to say about this.
I disagree with the decision that was made by the Board of Selectmen, I am not on board with this decision at all. I was on the charter commission, and one of our sole purposes was to make sure that the whole town was educated on what was happening before the decision was made, this clearly wasn't done at this time, so, I, I'm the voice of the people, and the people clearly say that they don't want this, and I still stand by that, I do not want this, I don't think it's a good idea for Pepperell.
As far as our one-third vote goes in this whole thing, there's a great example of how good a one-third vote is, it's useless. If the other two don't like it, then you're stuck. But, to go back to, to go back to the DPW thing and that they're gonna cover all the things, I'm gonna read out of the contract that was signed, that's on the internet, that's on the town's website. Each of the participating communities shall provide and maintain all necessary telephone circuits, radio circuits slash frequencies, two-way radios, antennas, and any related and/or necessary equipment required for the operation of the dispatch facility and their respective emergency networks. All such telecommunications costs, maintenance costs, and expenses for equipment located within its community shall be the responsibility of each respective community. I'm lost on how you're getting that they're gonna cover all these expenses when you signed a contract saying that it doesn't.
You signed a contract talking about the regional dispatch, all that information you're talking about is the actual equipment in the trucks, and we've already, on the grants, that's for the operations, but the grants for setting it up, the state is going to fund the purchase of all the equipment for startup, after that, it becomes ours.
And if the state, for whatever reason, doesn't, we are contractually obligated to pay it. So, if the state, for whatever reason, fails to do that for us, we have signed a contract saying that we will pay it, and that it's our responsibility, and it's not Tewksbury's responsibility, or the RACC's, it's our responsibility.
It's our responsibility, it was right here in Pepperell.
Perfect.
Okay? But here's the difference, is that the state funding is covered under taxes that are earmarked specifically for that, and would require a change in the mass general law in order for that to happen. It's not part of the state's budget, it's all funded separately.
Okay, and just one more thing, you seem to be talking about this like this is water under the bridge, it's over. The selectmen were able to vote on this, if the selectmen did what the townspeople, maybe not everyone in this room, but a good chunk of them are asking, you could overturn this now, before we incur any more expenses as this thing goes on. If we wait, if we, if we wait to do this and more money's invested, we're gonna be on the hook for that money, rightfully so. We signed a contract, we entered in, if we wait two years to get out of this, it's gonna cost us a lot more money than if we leave next week, and you have the power to do that.
What I want to say to each one of you selectmen, I was a former dispatcher in this town for almost ten years, not one of you has ever sat at that console and picked up a phone and said, "911, this line's recorded, what is your emergency?" Not one of you people know what it's like to hear a confused person on the other end of the phone say, "I am by the bridge, I need help, I'm by the wooden bridge." You cannot tell me that a town twenty-five miles away is going to know. I understand that you're saying we don't have a vote with Groton, but I cannot believe that a town that has been part of our mutual aid for as long as I've been in Pepperell can't be trusted, and for the town of, for the selectmen of Pepperell to say they won't give us a vote, and for you not to trust them, what does that say about our neighborly conduct with our neighbors? 911 is an important thing in this town, you can't just give it to just anyone, the people that take care of this town, the chief, the fire chief, our highway department, our water department, they all depend on that communications system. I understand you're saying that this is gonna be state-of-the-art, but for the little bit of money that it would take for us to keep our own here, I don't think there's anybody in this town that wouldn't stand up and say, "We want to take care of our own, and we can do a good job doing it." But you, as the selectmen, had the power to not inform us, to make your own decisions, and the two of you, and I don't mean to point fingers, but I will, are very adamantly against what the people want. You went by a town administrator who doesn't live in this town, doesn't give a damn about what happens in Pepperell, he just wants to make a recommendation, and you agreed with it, and I think it's wrong. Give these gentlemen their voice and let them do what's best for this town, because you know what, the both of you are gonna be gone in a couple of years anyway.
Craig Hanson, five Long Meadow, I don't know if I can follow that up, but I'll try. So, I agree with a lot of what the townspeople have said, I have a couple of questions, was the feasibility study ever conducted?
Was the feasibility study ever conducted?
I'll take that silence as a no.
I can't answer that.
Okay, that sounds like a no. So, one of the things that, that I've looked at, other states around us where regionalization works, in most, or if not all, the cases where it's been successful, it's been approached, and even the two chiefs at the Info Night meeting made this point pretty clear, that they approach it from a public safety perspective, and we're approaching it from a cost savings, some other perspective that doesn't seem to be public safety-oriented, because the people making the decision do not have that public safety background, whereas our chiefs that we've entrusted our lives and our safety with have that background. So, it doesn't seem like we're going into this setting ourselves up for success, we just saw, spoke earlier around, I think it was Amesbury that has left, because of some of the issues they've had, they did not go into that with public safety first in that, in that agreement. So, I, again, have other issues with the fact that we're not trusting our public safety officials in this matter. The other thing, from the Info Night, the 911 chief from the state made it pretty clear that he was never approached by Groton or Devens in terms of the possible impact, possible grant availability, things like that, with us regionalizing with them, and had only been approached by Tewksbury. I didn't know if you can confirm that, and why we did not approach and go through a formal process with those other two towns to get equal comparison?
He did state, he did state that, but he also clarified that you can't approach the state 911 with information until you've joined, it's a chicken-or-the-egg scenario, you have to join first, that's why only one approached them.
Okay. And then the last, I guess the last question I have is, I didn't think we got an answer to the other gentleman's question definitively, do we have the ability today, tomorrow, to exit the agreement with our two-year notice? The contract does not say anything about waiting until the center is up and running, it says the effective date of the agreement is when it was signed, and we can exit with two years' notice.
We have, we have to commit for two years, once we've committed for two years, then we can give notice that we want to leave, if that's the route that is taken at that point in time.
Have we not committed by signing that contract?
Right, but it's, it's two years after it opens.
It doesn't say that in the contract.
The contract assumes an open functioning facility.
You show me a contract that assumes anything, and that's not really a valid contract?
The co, the contract deals with an open functioning facility, the two years has to do with it being in operation. The facility is not in operation yet, right now, we have a contract for a conceptual facility, the facility has to be built first, we are committed once the facility is open and running.
So, then if we're not committed, we can get out now?
We have a binding contract, we cannot terminate it until we've met our two years with the facility.
I, I don't see that as what the contract reads, but...
Lorraine Newell, ten High Street. Mine, my question is twofold, and it's more procedurally, I think. My street's being worked on right now, what, how is it worked, how is the communication between the people that are working on our streets, if there's a fire hydrant down versus the road is blocked, because we've been told our road is gonna be blocked off and on for the next eight to nine weeks, how does dispatch, sorry, in Pepperell now know that that road is being worked on, it's going to be blocked, or a fire hydrant is not working because it's being worked on? And then how is that going to be addressed when it goes to the new center? Because if there's a fire hydrant down and my house starts to burn, who's gonna come and put my fire out? You know, I know the guys will show up, but who's gonna have the water to put the fire out?
So, in, in terms of emergency issues, the fire chief and police can speak to what their current procedure is, again, they'd need to develop that procedure as part of the RACC, but for, for construction projects, things that we know ahead of time, we know about that ahead of time, that's all built in, you share... You share with the relative agencies when that occurs. You give notice, you share, so that everybody knows what's going on. So if there's a six-week construction project that's going to reroute roads in a certain way, then that information will be shared with our communications center just like it is now.
Sure. Okay, so we all know that when construction happens, things happen that aren't expected. So what happens if they're down my street and something happens to one fire hydrant? I live on a dead-end street. I'm new to the street, so I'm not sure exactly where all the fire hydrants are. But what happens if one of those fire hydrants is down because they're working on it and they did something to it? How is that information given to the dispatch people here? And how will that be translated to Tewksbury 25 miles away? Because that's important. That communication is really important.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Fire hydrant's down. How, how today does, we'll give them two scenarios. How today do you know or the department know that a fire hydrant's down? Like, the water department might be working on it.
Correct. Our dispatch center would know that. It's on the whiteboard inside dispatch center.
So how would you envision that happening in the new scenario?
That all needs to be worked out. Again, I'm...
Okay, I think that, is that what you're...
But, okay, so they're working on my street. We all know that things don't go as planned, so they're just doing certain things to my street. What happens if a fire hydrant in the afternoon gets knocked out for some reason unexpectedly? How is that information translated today? And is it possible that that information won't get translated the right way two years from now or a year from now when the new dispatch center is open? Because if 25 miles away, if I call 10 High Street and they haven't gotten the message that my fire hydrant's not working, you guys are all going to, you guys are all going to show up, which I love it when you guys show up, but you're not going to be able to put my fire out. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, like, I need to know that that communication's going to happen as a citizen. Anybody should know. As a citizen, if you're working on my street, how is that communication going back and forth? And I'm not talking just about procedurally, that kind of stuff that we need to work out. I'm talking about, they're working down my street, something might happen, you know, somebody knocks something over and it's down.
Right now, we also, they put a black bag over the hydrant, which says, which says it's out of service. And so if the truck went by that and would relay to the next truck, you'd have to get the fur of the hydrant. So, again, dispatch center would have that. If it would, is it going to be relayed? I'm hoping that's the case, yes.
Thank you.
Mike? Thank you. So just one point I'd like to make as a person that was involved in hiring the current town administrator. Just know that when we have paid professional people, such as our accountant, our town administrator, it depends on who you get to apply. And I can just tell you for a fact, there were, before we throw people under the bus for not being from Pepperell, there were no applicants for the town administrator job from Pepperell, and actually, none from anywhere around the area. And then the, the other point I just want to, to make, to make sure people understand is, right now, I think we have four dispatchers. Is that correct?
Six.
You have six, okay. All right, so, but you could lose one, could have one on vacation, maybe get one sick, and then you're down to three, trying to cover the shifts. The regionalization, whether it's what we're talking about here, whether it's Groton. Careful about keeping everything the same as things change. So that's just kind of my two points. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mike Leveque, two First Ave. Actually, I have two questions. Has Town Council reviewed that contract and is what the selectmen's saying correct and that we, we can't get out of it for two years past when the open date is?
I don't review contracts and give my opinion on the substance of the contract. The only thing Town Council does on any given contract is approve it as to form, okay? And that goes for every contract I've ever signed, ever signed on behalf of the town. The only thing I do is review, is review the contract. I am not allowed to make any recommendations as to the substance of the contract, because that's not my business.
Oh, understood. I wasn't asking if you made a recommendation. I was just under...
You know, another thing, with any client, you know, attorney, you know, I always like to say something about, something is, you know, "It's not my money and it's not my property, so I shouldn't tell you what to do with it. I will tell you if there are any legal pitfalls to it, but I will not tell you what to do with your money or with your property."
Understood, sir. But did you, upon review of the contract, is what the, the selectmen's saying correct in that we cannot get out of it until the place has been open for two years?
Again, that's a term of the contract. I approve the contract as to form. If you look at any, any given town council or city solicitor anywhere...
So you can't, you can't speak to the terms that are in the contract if that's correct?
That's correct. That's not, that's not within my province, no.
Okay, so you're, I don't, I think you're misunderstanding my question. Are we bound for two years or no?
I reviewed the contract as to form, period. You know, let's, let's, let's understand something. I am not contracting on, I don't contract on behalf of the town of Pepperell. That's an executive decision.
Understood.
Okay? See, so again, that's all I do, that's all I would ever do with any given contract. Now, I did not, I'm not, was not involved with the negotiations of the contract or anything like that, or the evaluation of the various proposals.
Understood.
That's it, you know?
And I'm not trying to put you at fault. I'm merely asking, is, is it true, the way the contract is written, that we cannot get out of it for two years until after it started?
What did it say?
That's something that I figured you'd be prepared to answer by this point in time.
I don't have the contract in front of me right now.
So Town Council can't answer that question?
She has. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so...
He can't answer, he can't answer your question.
He can't answer that question, okay.
He doesn't have the contract in front of him.
Fair enough. So my second question, I, I've looked at all the facts and figures here, all the numbers and everything, and everything according to what would happen if we do move to Tewksbury, because that's where the contract is written toward and everything. We're down to the dollar, $49,254 will, and the savings and everything if we move to Tewksbury. And I'm sure the due diligence was done here and, and selectmen are saying that due diligence was done ahead of time to make the best decision and everything. I know earlier, the, the citizens petition quoted numbers and things like that from other towns, and, and you folks don't agree with those numbers, and I understand that. I, I don't know where they came from either. Can you tell us what the numbers would have been had we gone to Groton? What would have been the savings and what would be the grants and what might change, what might be different?
I can't tell you those numbers. Mark probably could if he was here, but I don't. I only have the numbers relative to, to this particular agreement, because that's the direction we were going to go in.
Okay, so you don't know what, at, at this time, you don't know what they were, but you had those numbers at one point in time to make this decision informed?
I, I don't know if we did have those numbers, because we didn't go forward with Groton. The numbers were part of the discussion with Tewksbury in terms of going forward with the communications center. There were preliminary discussions with Groton, but the facility at Groton was also very different. We had to go into existing space. There was no ability for our employees to go over. There were different considerations. So it stopped at a certain point.
So this has no financial bearing, the, the cost savings meant nothing in your decision then, because you didn't have the numbers for either?
The goal is to reinvest the cost savings into our public safety. That, the whole point is to do that. So it's not so much about cost savings, it's cost efficiency and efficiency of service. I don't care what service somebody provides, we can always get better individually and collectively in terms of the service that we provide. We always have the ability to become more efficient. So the goal is to become more efficient, but also be able to manage our budget. There was an override potential several years ago. It failed. One of the big components with, with that particular override were the capital items needed to make sure that we had future equipment for our public safety. That failed. So I understand people are talking here about, you know, if you need a radio, you get it; if you need this, you get it. We're a town of 12,000 people. I'm not sure how many people are here tonight, but we have over 7,000 registered voters. We, we have a quorum here tonight. That's pretty much about it out of 7,000 registered voters plus. So I'm not entirely sure that everybody in town would be on board with some of those statements. And so our job is to make decisions that meets the needs of the town collectively, all 11-plus, 12,000 people. And not everybody is on board with increasing their taxes to pay with some of these things. If there were, then that override would have passed, but it didn't.
Oh, I understand. Oh, I understand completely. But the, but the question is, we have all of the numbers of the, what would we be saving if we moved to Tewksbury, but we have no idea what we would have saved had we moved to Groton?
What I'm saying is, I don't know if we have all of those numbers. And, and, you know, in all fairness, Mark is extremely sick. He's not here because he doesn't not want to be here. He's very sick.
Yeah, but this isn't Mark's decision. This was a board of selectmen's decision.
I understand that. We were not given those numbers.
You made the decision without knowing how much it would have saved had we moved to Groton?
Because the cost savings wasn't the primary goal. It is one of the things that we look at. But the primary goal is to make sure we are providing more efficient public safety to the best of our ability, to making sure we are managing our budget, being able to invest in our public safety. We're understaffed at all levels. To make sure that we have the ability to provide future capital needs for our public safety. We're not looking just at today. We have to look at projecting out into the future, where we're going as a town, what we're going to expect in the future for capital planning. That's all part of the process. It's not just, you know, the equivalent of paycheck to paycheck, year to year. We have to plan out further than that.
It just seems to me that with a decision this heavy, we should have known, if Groton could have saved us an extra $200,000 per year, would we not have wanted that? You're sticking your head no, but you're telling me you don't know what those numbers were.
Well, we don't, we don't know what the numbers were, but the, the thing is that Groton is already up and running. And one of the things we were looking at was, we have five dispatchers. We wanted an opportunity for these dispatchers to have a job. If we went to Groton, it was going to be a half a position, maybe one at, at the most.
Understood. So I understand there were other factors, yeah.
So that was the other side of the equation, is looking, here's an opportunity to go in and build something new, be able to provide an opportunity for our existing dispatchers to go work and continue employment and hopefully carry them over. And, you know, quite frankly, Tewksbury was, in my opinion, the best option, because it was a brand spanking new facility. We get to create all the procedures we need, we don't have to adopt somebody else's.
Understood. I, I think it was under thought, that's just my opinion.
I, I have an answer to your question. I have the agreement in front of me, and it says that the effective date of the amended district agreement effective date shall be when the participating communities of Drake and Tewksbury and Pepperell have executed the document, which they did in April. And it says the initial term of the district agreement shall be for a term beginning on the effective date and ending on June 30th, 2025.
Okay, so the effective date was back in April when it was signed, and we can exit two years from there. Do we have to wait two years to decide the exit?
Well, that's a two-year phase-out period. You give the, the notice, that starts, it's like Brexit, you know what I mean? It starts the phase-out period going, you know?
So we could, they could serve notice tomorrow and that starts the two-year period.
Exactly right. Now, you know, if you, don't mind me saying, this is a sense of town meeting article, okay? I think the sense of town meeting is coming, coming through pretty clearly, at least. I don't live in the town, but I can kind of get it, you know? But anyway, that's what it is. And the contract is what it is, and there are, there are termination, there's a termination clause in the contract. It can be triggered, you know, or not, okay?
Very good. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I can answer his numbers question. I can answer the question about the numbers, sir, over here. From what we were told in the committee, Tewksbury is going to be 163, this is just per year totaled, 163,663. Devens was 158,000, and Groton told us between 110 and 120.
Mr. Moderator, through you, Bill Kennison, 12 Canal Street. First of all, I'd like to thank all the volunteers and elected officials that are on stage and all the other ones in town. It takes a lot to get up there, you make a lot of decisions, some are popular, some are unpopular. But as an elected official, you have to realize you are a volunteer and you need to listen to your paid professionals. When all your paid professionals speak against an idea, except for the town administrator, one person, it's time to reconsider your vote. I'm sorry, I'm a little biased, but every time I hear the word "regionalization," I hear the word "outsource." I've had enough of my life of outsourcing. I mean, we say it's only 25 miles down to Tewksbury. It's only about 7,000 of India or Pakistan. We could set up a call center there, it'd be pretty cheap. You know, the last thing I want to hear when I call 911 is, "Yes, Mr. Kennison, on this stage, your chest, your chest hurts. Have you tried rebooting your pacemaker?" Look, I'm hearing over and over, yeah, we haven't developed that policy, we haven't built the center. If it ain't broken, don't fix it. We just voted a lot of money to fix school buildings. Let's fix our dispatch. Let's keep the people in town. The dispatchers in town know the ambulance drivers, they know the EMTs, they know the fire department, they know the police department. They're familiar with each other, they know what they're talking about. Somebody from Tewksbury gets hired as a dispatcher there, they're from downtown Boston, they get hired in Tewksbury because they got a lot of experience behind them, but they don't know boo about Pepperell. Let's keep it here in Pepperell. Let's keep it simple. Let's let people that understand the people of Pepperell take care of the people of Pepperell and leave it at that. And if the Town Council doesn't understand the contract or can't speak at this point to it, let's find someone that can get us out of it, because I can't picture that they're going to drag us kicking and screaming for two years to build it and two years after that before we can get out. If we don't want any part of it, they'll let us out.
David Lavender, 19 Deerfield Drive again. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm not even sure if this is allowed, but I, we do have a former selectman sitting here. I'd like to know if it was ever discussed in a selectman's meeting while Mr. Green was a selectman, since we have been told that this has been being discussed for quite some time. Is, is that legitimate to ask?
It started in 2015. No, it was September 2015.
You weren't on in 2015?
I was on in 2015. We were told that discussions have been going on since 2009, and he has served since 2009.
Want to speak to that?
I will speak to that. Yes, discussions did happen, but quite honestly, if you look at the free cash graph here, you'll see that we really had bigger fish to fry and we basically backtabled it most of the time, so...
So there weren't really extensive conversations, because there was not enough money? Okay. I also, I, I understand, and both Mr. Nutter and Ms. Sanodakis are speaking very confidently about how things are going to work. I hope it does work that way, but you're also not to speak very confidently about some of the other aspects of this. As far as the DPW goes, I know that they're going to be part of this in some way, shape, or form. I don't see that that's in the contract anywhere. I, at the informational meeting, I didn't hear that either of the gentlemen from Cohasset or, or Mansfield spoke to the effect that any of their DPWs, DBWs were involved in this process. I, I really hope, and is there anybody from the DPW here that could maybe speak to this? Another thing too, I would like to point out, that I heard one of the gentlemen from, I don't remember if it was the fire chief or the police chief from, from away, said that, and I may be paraphrasing a little bit, but he said, "If you don't take the advice of the ultimate end users, you're doomed to failure." And you didn't do that. And if anybody from the DPW is here, I'd like to hear what they think.
I think, because this is a sense, and I don't want to, I don't want to cut anything short, but unless there's something new, I, I tend to agree with what Ned said earlier as far as this is a sense of the body, this is non-binding. Is there anything new you want to add, or do you want to go to a vote?
Vote.
What's that?
Vote.
Okay, okay. I mean, I don't want to cut, if, if somebody has something new, I'd prefer, I...
One thing.
Something new?
Something new. The 911 phones, when they leave Pepperell, the state's going to invest a lot of money in transferring your calls to Tewksbury. It's not going to be a wait-and-see-if-Tewksbury thing works out. If we decide Tewksbury's terrible and we say we want to go to Groton, the state will have every right to say, "No, we've spent a fortune to get you to Tewksbury, you're not going anywhere else." not going anywhere else." So this isn't a "let's try Tewksbury and see how it works" thing. This is way more important than that. And do you have a guarantee from the state that that's not true? That they will fund us moving all over the state when we, the townspeople, vote on it?
Well, I don't have a guarantee that they'll fund us to move all over the state, but I still don't agree with your statement either. And what's your basis to make that statement, that the state's gonna force us to stay there? Based on what?
There is no guarantee that they will allow us to move. There's, there's no guarantee that they will say, "You have to stay here," and there is zero guarantee that they will allow us to move to Groton, too. So in two years, we get to just throw it up in the air and see which one of us was right? I don't like to gamble, though, personally. And... Can either of you back that up? Is that, is that accurate, what I said, or...
You want to keep your questions coming to me?
I'm sorry.
You'll be in detention later. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to answer the gentleman's question. He is right, the state 911 department will say yea or nay whether we can move or not. We could say that we want to move to Groton, but they could say, "No, we're not gonna transfer your 911 lines over to Groton," and we could be stuck in Tewksbury answering 911 calls. We can get out of it in that sense, that we could have dispatchers in Groton, but our 911 calls could still lay in Tewksbury. So it's ultimately their saying where the 911 equipment goes. Wait a minute. I'm sorry.
So in that perspective, we'd be back to what we have today. So Tewksbury would become like the state police in that case, the 911 calls would go there, and then they'd have to be dispatched to ours, wherever we may be.
It wouldn't be like it is today from the standpoint of we answer our 911 calls today. We wouldn't have 911 equipment at that point. They would have to allow us to move that equipment to state, if that answers your question.
Is it new?
Yeah. River Pillsbury, 18 Maple Street, Lot 58. The person that runs the Tewksbury dispatch at this point has 17 dispatchers and has made it clear in the talkings in that town that all 17 of those dispatchers will have a job. That leaves four positions open for possible Pepperell dispatchers to go there. And that's a fact, so I don't, I don't know where you're seeing that we're going to be able to take a bunch of our dispatchers and get them jobs there. The other thing is that we can get out of this, and we have a vote coming in April of 2018.
New?
New. Hi. Renee Dargento, 18 Prospect Street. This is very lopsided with Pepperell being a smaller town and those other two towns with large populations. And I think when it comes to the budgeting and the say, we might have an equal say with the other two towns, but the budget itself is gonna be lopsided as well, because we're gonna be paying equal amounts of money to serve, help serve their towns, their larger population. We got a smaller population, that's number one. And number two, I want to know, to get out of the contract, what, is there a cost to getting out of the contract? And if we wanted to get out of it today without even having a two-year process, what would it cost? Or is there a cost?
So at the informational meeting earlier this month, the state regional 911 director was there and he answered that question to the best ability he was able to at that point in time, as there have been other towns that have started the process and then decided to pull out before they got fully into the process. Several of them are in litigation now over the payment of millions of dollars, some for several hundred thousands of dollars in order to pay back, depending on the size of the town, the regional center, what they received for equipment and all that. So grant applications have already been submitted for us for equipment. Once those grant applications are granted and equipment is outlaid, money is assessed, then it may not be so easy. The state may very well say, "Fine, you can give your notice, but you've got to reimburse for equipment that you've been given or cost outlay." He was, he was very clear about that, that it's, there could be a cost component to it if you pull out.
So, but before the grant money is accepted, you could pull out because there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be any...
It's two years. So by the time you get to the end of two years, you'll have made it through two, if not three, grant cycles.
But if you pulled out today, what exactly would happen?
It's two years. You still have to give two years.
In violation of the contract, if we wanted to violate the contract, what are the consequences?
Two years and potential fees. We are committed for two years.